Ready, Ralph?
Are we at six o'clock Apple time?
It is.
Six o'clock Apple time.
Six o'clock Apple time. Very well, let's get started. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for attending and participating in today's regularly scheduled Alexander County Board of Education meeting here held at the Alexander County Board of Education Conference Room. Today's date is September 10th, 2024, and let's begin with a pledge of allegiance which will be led by Mr. Degenhart.
Just now, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Degenhart. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the agenda? What is the pleasure of the board as we proceed forward?
Mostly approved.
Second.
So we have a first by Mr. McLean and a second by Ms. Rhine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. By unanimous consent, the agenda is approved. Next, we have Dr. Del Revis who's going to share with us honors and recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Dr. Griffin. Dr. Griffin, you want to go ahead and move towards the front? So tonight's recognitions are for the staff and the students at the schools as they relate to the school performance grades. You may remember that the state released those grades last week, and of our 11 schools, we had three that exceeded growth according to the state. So first, I'd like to ask Ms. Brown, Mary Brown, and her staff from Alexander Early College to come on up. And Mr. Bowman, would you come up? So Alexander Early College earned a score of A for their performance and growth, and they exceeded growth expectations. Their growth score was a 2.78, and I'll remind the audience and board members, anything above a two is considered to have exceeded growth expectations. Alexander Early College, as you may know, is geared towards first-generation college students. The students are bright, but more than that, Ms. Brown says, they are determined. AEC is one of 124 schools statewide out of more than 27,000 schools to earn an A and exceed. The school also had a 95% plus graduation rate. Congratulations.
Great job ladies. Great job.
All right, so next we will ask Ms. Jessica Monday and the staff from Stony Point Elementary that she brought with her to come on up. Ms. Rhine, would you join them?
Way to go, Ms. Monday.
Good job.
Great job, Jessica.
So Stony Point Elementary exceeded growth last year based on state testing. The school had a 2.38 points in the growth. Again, that's above a positive two. Stony Point is home to about 236 students, including their pre-K students. I spoke with teacher Jordan Hefner at Stony Point, and he believes it is a team effort at the school, and their work to meet the needs of every individual student individually is what pushed the school past the goal line. So congratulations.
Congrats. Good job, Jessica.
All right, and last but not least, we'll ask Ms. Ashley Mayo and her staff to come up. I believe Ms. Houston's with her. Mr. Robinson, would you join them? So West Alexander Middle School has exceeded growth every year since 2018. So that was 2018, 2019, then we didn't have tests, of course, in 2020, and then in 2021, we didn't get growth scores because it was a wacky year statewide. People went back to school in all kind of different fashions. So still a pretty good longstanding record since 2018. So again, they have exceeded in 2022 now, 2023, and now again in 2024. And this past year, 2324, West Alexander had a growth score of 3.35. What's that magic number, folks? Two, positive two. So they're well above positive two, and they earned a B for their school grade. We are proud of the continued excellence of the student and staff shown at West Alexander. Go Bulldogs!
Great job.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Congrats.
That concludes our celebrations. You may be dismissed if you are not interested in staying for the business meeting. Thank you. Well, that you have to make supper or something.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments? No public comment has been submitted, so we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Have all board members had the opportunity to review the material on the consent agenda? And if so, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
So the consent agenda has been moved to be approved by Mr. Bowman as a first and then a second by Mr. McLean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. By unanimous consent, the consent agenda is approved. Next, we have reports. Ms. Throjnovsky, you have a report on transportation?
First, I'd like to be known that I am not in my uniform today. I was about 15 minutes ago, but I changed. I hope you all are doing well this evening. Hi, I am very thankful for the fact that I get to come back again this year and accentuate the positive transportation and spend a day here. So last year, when I joined you all, we were a little bit short-staffed. We have grown to full staff, and we have hired Bethany, and she was hired to do our Tims and Senovia. Tims is our routing program. Senovia is our GPS data system, as well as time and attendance, several other things that I'll get into. Bradley was hired as mechanic one. He's brand new to the diesel mechanic side, but he's been under Darren's tutelage this past year, as well as several training that he attended and doing very, very well. Josh was added to our team as well as our fuel truck driver. Josh also handles our head start vehicles and our drivers. Which is something that was not done in our department prior to. It was done at outside sources, which can be further explained. We brought that back in to maintain our vehicles. Darren, as you all know, has been with the transportation department for almost 18 years. Ravanda sits, and Michael has been with us for two years. So in this past year, we hosted several training programs at the bus garage, as well as going through some other facilities. We did some Cummins diagnostics, multiplex and diagnostics. I can't talk diagnostics. Cummins engines, 6.7 fuel systems. There's a lot to learn when it comes to school buses and so many things. We will continue. All right, if it pleases the board this year, I'm going to go with the same five charter bus companies that we went with last year. H&R, Holiday, STI, and Young. These five companies have all met the pre-qualification checklist of the physicals. And some of these qualifications include a drug and alcohol testing, driver files, a review of their accident register, policies on driver hours of service, and a review of their policies on breakdown. These companies also work together, and if they are overbooked, and one of our schools call, they will recommend one of the other companies. Last year, we had nine charter bus school trips planned. There was unfortunately three canceled, one due to weather, one due to zooming overbooked. The other six were canceled. Okay, so the biggest issues, many of you remember from last year, that we had to take on was our routing system and our map. So one of the very first things I did when I came on was reached out to the county and got a GIS map. Basically, what that is, is exactly the roads that are in this county, and we overlay that into our Tims program, which is our routing program that we get free from the state. And if you look at the first picture there, the one on the left, see the shorter purple line? That's vineyard drive or was vineyard drive in Tim's prior to us getting the GIS map and fixing the map. But if you look at the right-hand side, you see the difference? That's actually vineyard drive. So just imagine the amount of difference in miles or time if a bus is entering that road, or what kind of corrections the driver was getting between those two. So we had several hundred roads like this. We had whole neighborhoods, say for instance, in the Bethlehem area that weren't even drawn in the map. You know, you think about that and that whole picture there, the miles, the miles, the time, the students riding, and what kind of documentation was being sent. So that's now all been corrected. So we work on that every day. Okay, so we got the routing down pat at the GPS calendar in Senovia. Initially, when we started, you can see that hotness right there. See the blue pinpoints? Those are student stops that we had in Tim. The red are the actual stops that the buses were making, and some of them actually overlaying. Some of them are actually, we didn't even have them in Tim's when we started. And then if you take a look at the purple line towards the bottom, that's what Tim's was telling that bus to do. Of course, it didn't have the correct data. Then you have the red, which is what GPS is saying what the bus was doing. Then if you look at kind of the chartreuse colors in the future, that's where Tim's and the GPS data was actually matching, okay? So our job was to think back and fix it from the top. We had several lessons this morning. We have several that look a lot better like this. And the blue pinpoint?
Okay, babe, thank you. All right, so the blue pinpoints that you see there could possibly be students that didn't ride that particular day. This is bus 22 out of Wittenberg. I like to use this bus because it was one of the first ones that truly came together. And if you see the chartreuse lines, see how that bus traveled exactly? What was in Tim's matched up with Senovia. So the driver is actually able to use the turn-by-turn directions on the tablet on their bus. For years, drivers have used paper directions like this. That's hard to do when you're a sub-bus driver. So if we, as a department, can fix that for the driver, and pray to goodness the tablet works every day, then that driver can just turn on those turn-by-turn and hopefully find every stop, every turn, and go along as they should be. Okay? All right, so we're going to go into the next step. Here comes the bus. That was another app that we included in our transportation department last year. We currently have 1,174 student parent accounts throughout the county. And basically, what this does is it gives the parents the information of knowing when the bus is coming. They can draw a radius around their stop location or their home, and it will notify the parent within 10 minutes when the bus is arriving. This will allow the students, you know, some wait time outside on bad weather. It also gives the parents who are at work some notification to let them know that the bus stopped at their home and the child made it on the bus. You know, it stopped, so that's the goal, and also made it home after school. So it's been a big positive thing, I believe. Okay, the next part of our GPS Senovia is the time and attendance piece. So we didn't really start drivers on this last year until about mid-October, where we now have every driver using these tablets for time and attendance. They receive 10 minutes prior to leaving out in the morning to do their pre-trip, as well as clean their bus or any other things that they need to be doing on that bus. They ride the route, they come back again, they get another 10 minutes to do their post-trip, to look through everything, do any cleaning. You know, if they have to do any discipline referrals, anything that they need to do. This also keeps the driver from having to go in the building. It's early morning, 5:30, quarter to 6:00, they don't have to get into the building to clock in or clock out. It's all taken care of on the bus. We and our office comb through these times every day, and the time is downloaded into the link system. So we take care of that for the bookkeepers at all the schools. Sometimes there are some glitches, especially these first few days of schools, but we have worked through a lot of those, and finance and HR help us with some of those items sometimes. It's been a big positive thing. One of the things I want to do at the end of September is kind of do a comparison between last September and this September to see what kind of a time savings it is. So I'm hoping it'd be a big, big savings. All right, so last year, or actually, I think it was in 2022, there was an audit of the transportation department prior to my arrival. And on page seven of this lovely book that I use as my Bible, it was asked that we increase the stop-arm cameras on our buses. We have currently increased that number to 19 buses. And what that means is they have four cameras on the inside of the bus and four cameras on the outside of the bus. These cameras cost approximately $3,000 for the complete setup. I will continue to go for grants and continue to increase those numbers as often as I can. Another positive thing for our buses is the illuminated stop arms and school bus decals. We have three buses currently with the illuminated stop arms. We will have five here soon. We have one bus with the illuminated school bus decal. We will have three here soon. And again, any grants, I'll keep submitting, I promise. So I've kind of gotten ahead of myself. Oh, another good thing that we're going to do, I noticed last year when, on March 18th, when we did the scenario at East, that communication in this county is tough. So we either need to employ CB radios on buses, or we're actually going to be trying school radios. They're more of a cell push-to-talk kind of a system. We're going to do the three buses at East and Bus 24 at Hidnite. We're going to try those for a week in September, and if that works well, then I'll move forward with those. But I just kind of want to do a comparison between that and the CB radios that we have on the C buses, special needs buses, see which one is best. And then again, whatever works best, try for some grants, do what I can on the buses. Okay?
Could we, just before you move on to that page, there's one question. Could you help us understand more about what the cloud technology means?
Oh goodness, I'm still learning a little bit of that, too. Bus 24, Bus 24 has kind of been my guinea pig this whole past year. Let me tell you a positive thing about Bus 24. I'll back up a little bit. Bus 24 was received through what's called the VW grant. It didn't cost this county a dime, okay? So the bus was purchased, then we also got the camera system through a grant. And with that camera system, Fortress said, "We want you to try the cloud system." What that is, is real-time. We can literally watch what's going on inside of that bus at any time. There's been some glitches, so we're still working through it, which is why we're demoing it on Bus 24. That driver's been very patient with us. She's done a lot of things with Senovia and GPS and all kinds of things, but she's honest with us, and that's what we need. I don't need somebody to say, "It's okay. No, it's not working." I need to know. And so Tammy's been great with us, working with us on that. So, but the cloud system, I'm still learning, but like I said, it's real-time. You can watch what's going on on that bus. And what the goal is, hopefully to get those on all of those buses, but you know, if we have some buses with some huge discipline issues, maybe start there, and it might help curb some things.
And does it also connect to the outside cameras, so if somebody goes by the stop sign?
Yes, the whole system is.
A real-time update to law enforcement?
Yes. Yep, so, but again, still working through some of those glitches, because where this bus goes is way at the upper end of the county. And not everything always works all the time, but Fortress and myself, Alex and myself are working all the time. I'm trying to get this worked out.
So just to add to that, in my, in my line of work, you probably need to look at additional cell towers.
Okay.
Purchase a T-Mobile SIM card, a Verizon SIM card, and a AT&amp;T SIM card, and let the system bounce back on each SIM card.
Okay, okay.
And you'll see a better use of upload connectivity.
Yeah.
If you do that.
Okay, all right, we'll do. I might call you for some more information if it's okay. It's a lot to learn. All right, another training that we all attended this past summer in Asheville was wheelchair restraints. I don't believe this county ever truly had a training on wheelchair restraints. But today, I'm proud to say that we actually have our first child in a wheelchair on a bus, and he was taken home today. And tomorrow morning, he will be picked up. So, and we may have another wheelchair student join us here shortly. So that, to me, was a huge success to be able to do that for that child.
Great job.
So I'm really, that's, yeah, a good thing. All right, evacuations off of school buses, also very, very important. You never know what could happen at any time. Unfortunately, when I was in Ariddle County, I did have a bus burn, and it burned in less than four minutes. So this right here is very important. The Early College had never conducted an evacuation before. This year, we did it with them, and the students did very, very well, and the staff helped us, so. Okay, tons of things to go over with you here, just very quickly. Our next bus class is October 15th, 16th, and 17th in Caldwell County. Caldwell County and Alexander County, myself, we alternate. This summer, we had bus class July at Ellendale, and now Caldwell will host the next one. So, and that usually works out pretty good because it helps them get drivers, and it's just, it's a good comparison. DOT physicals and copies of CDL certifications are now kept in our office, and they're organized. The background information database was also brought back to the transportation department, and that is updated almost daily. Individuals attending the CDL bus class, I let them know that I expect them to have their DOT physical and their CDL permit within 10 days. This shortens the amount of time to get them with Glenn or DMV specialists and on a bus driving for a school. Fees did increase with DMV this year for a Class B. Permits are now $87 as compared to $73.25 prior to. And licenses are now $106.50 if you don't have a motorcycle endorsement. If you do, it's $115.65. Little bit of driver statistics for you or data for you. According to the DMV dockets, we have 213 licensed drivers in Alexander County. Eighty of them have left our system for various reasons, but they still hold their CDL in this county. Thirty-six are not required to drive for different reasons, maybe IT personnel, department personnel, administrators, et cetera. And then 10 are currently out on medical leave or doctor's notes and can't drive. So that leaves us with 87 drivers to cover 84 routes. Tight, but, but working. We have 42 buses on the road, and last week, they traveled 11,290.17 miles. So they're driving, they're putting on some time. We will increase our school bus fleet with two new international buses this fall. We had hoped that they would arrive before school started, but international is a little bit behind on those. Activity bus fleet has gained some attention this year. We did receive two new activity buses in transportation department last spring. We have replaced floors on two of those activity buses, and we do have two that are going to be repainted. They're looking a little shabby, but we're going to take care of that. And our band department gets to take the two new buses to the football games this year, so we're going to be showing up and stop. Mileage charges currently for field trips for school buses, $2.03. Activity buses, $1.92. That's set by DPI. Little bit more on the statistics side for you. This past year, for athletics for middle and high school, they traveled a little bit over 26,611 miles. At that $1.92 per mile, it's a little bit over 51,000. Any other field trips on white activity buses, they traveled a little bit over 29,180 miles. And at $1.92, that was at a cost of $56,000, just a little bit over. Yellow bus field trip miles, they traveled 5,537 miles. Yellow buses typically use for curriculum-based field trips. And that was a little bit over $10,515. Let's see, mechanical hourly charges per DPI have increased. That is now $27 an hour. And next year, DPI does expect that to increase to 31. And what that means is when one of our mechanics works on a vehicle, a white vehicle per se, not only are the parts charged, but the amount of time is charged back to the department. That way, our budget is reimbursed. Okay? Another great big accomplishment, I think, that we had last year was just taking recognition of our bus drivers and how much they go above and beyond. These are very important people in the role of transportation. And so the communication was a huge key with the drivers, and just recognizing everything that they do every day to keep our children safe. So we tried to support them in every way possible. You'll also see where the counts routed children the first week of school. We had 18, over 1,800 routed for the AM this year, and a little bit over 2,200 for the PM. So, you know, we're just going to keep moving forward. We do have more goals for more training, keeping that communication open, trying to do the communication on the buses. And we're just, you know, anything we can possibly do to try to make our team better for the school system, we are trying to do. I think one of the largest things was this year when we did the routing of all the students for back to school, and the schools had the labels for their parents, and it was not something that they had to stress over. It was something that we took care of, which should be the case at all times. So, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, I know that was a lot.
So on the technology piece with Senovia, I think I'm saying that right?
Yes, sir.
It gives a sub-driver turn of audible directions when they're driving.
Not audible, sir. Well, they can turn it up, but most of them find that annoying, but it's just a little tablet here that is turn-by-turn. Yes, sir.
Kudos on that, because I'll say this, I used to have a bus license, and they used to ask me occasionally to drive. That was one of the things as a sub-driver, you would hear people talk about jumping on buses, understanding where they're, I mean, even knowing every road in the county.
Yes.
Knowing where every stop was at.
Right, and if sometimes, if you're out there in these rural parks, there's not even signs for the streets, so how do you know that that's where you're supposed to turn?
That's awesome improvement.
Yeah, it's a piece-by-piece thing, and we're working through it every day. It's little checkpoints and things to do on the map, but like I said, the communication with the drivers is very open, and we try to work through everything for them.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Throjnovsky. You've delivered a step-function improvement.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We're going to keep moving forward. I promise you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. Excellent. So next on the agenda are Board of Education committee reports. Do any committee chairpersons have a report to provide to board?
I do. Well, I would just like to remind everyone that right now, the month of September, we are taking applications for the teacher grants for the Education Foundation. That grant application can be found on the website under community. The community tab is keep falling down from the education, through the Education Foundation information. And if those need to be turned in by September the 30th, they'll be turned over to the selection committee, and then we award that in November. That is a $500 grant for teachers for their classroom, so please help us spread the word. Or it doesn't have to be their classroom. I mean, you can be a media coordinator, whatever, as long as you're helping children and using the money for children.
Is this something that maybe we should publish in social media to increase awareness?
Well, we do. It gets published, and I know that Dr. Griffin's pushed it out through the principals, so I just thought I would. So I just thought I would do a reminder today.
Wonderful. Any, any other, are you complete with your committee? Any other committee reports?
Fund facilities report, um, all of our new football field, tennis courts has just been phenomenal. A bunch of you guys was at ribbon cutting at the football a couple of weeks ago. It was just a, a great thing. I think it's huge for our, our county. Right now, County Rec is playing football right there on the field. So we're done seeing benefits that the whole county's getting from this. So, uh, very thankful for everybody that's had a hand in that. So it's a huge blessing.
Remember Bowman, we'll also be, uh, putting together ribbon cutting for our tennis courts and ribbon cutting for Sugarloaf as well. So we'll, we'll celebrate those accomplishments, uh, here, uh, within the next couple of weeks. And I'll send that up to the board.
Exciting stuff. Any other committee updates? Very well, so then we will move forward onto the next agenda, which is the school data update. Dr. Bowles. Oops, did we put her on a timer?
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, I'm excited.
I was kidding, I was kidding. I saw the timer pop up.
Well, I'm excited to be here in Alexander County. It's my first official school board presentation. So thank you guys for allowing me to be here and share an exciting information we have coming from our schools. One thing that I've learned, um, in the opportunity I've had to meet with each school and administrators and coaches and some of the teachers. Is the passion and the hard work that this group of people do here in this district. And so I'm excited to be a part of it. I'm excited to share with you today some information about some of their successes, um, that show up in the numbers. We know that all our successes don't show up in numbers and we have many others, but, um, we also can see it in, in the data as well. So, um, each year DPI puts out an annual testing report. And in that report, it is a reflection of the previous school year. So what we're looking at today is a reflection of 23, 24. And it looks at the summative data, the EOGs, which is 3rd through 8th grade and the EOCs, which is, um, particular courses in the 9th through 12th grade. Um, and what those assessments do is look at the proficiency level of students in terms of their ability to meet the, um, standards, the standard courses study or the essential standards in science. And it does it in the coursework of reading, math and science. And these are some of the, the reports, um, data that's put out through the reports. And so you can look through those testing results. It looks at growth, um, looks at the school performance grades that are assigned to each school. And looks at graduation rates and, um, identification based on the ratings that schools receive. So we're gonna look at a few of these today. And so in the testing results, and you, like I said, we have the two assessments that they analyze and look at. And that's the EOG and the EOC and the reading, math and science. The way they report that out is, um, in a couple of different ways. The first one is through grade level proficiency or UGLP. That is looking at students that are scoring at a level three, four or five. And the reason why they separate that out is, um, level three is sort of your meets. That's sort of the minimum of where a student, um, is considered proficient at, um, meeting the grade level standards. And so that gives you an idea of all of those students from meets and above. Then they have a separate category for college and career readiness. And these are those students that they look at as on track for being college and career ready as they move through their school career. And these are students that are level four and five. And the difference, um, with level four and five, level four is basically that, um, they are, they're, level three is that they're meeting the standards and they're ready to move on. Level four is they're meeting the standards, but they're also college and career ready, on track for that. Um, and then level five is they're, they're above that and could potentially be ready for some more advanced coursework, um, if that's applicable. And so that kind of gives you an idea of those, those three different rankings there. And, and then some other assessment results you'll see is the scores that come out of the ACT. Our work keys and English learner, um, progress for those students that take the language proficiency. So those are some other data points, um, metrics that you can get from the report. So this is a celebration for us. I want you to, to look closely, these are, um, our overall proficiency scores.
Sure.
So, um, what's exciting is that this is our districts in our region, ask, and also as compared to the state. And if you'll look, we are, um, higher than the state proficiency rate. And we are, um, the, there's two districts that are tied sort of for that, that first, um, highest percentage there. And we come basically in second, if you look at it that way, um, but only behind them with one percentage. So I think that is a huge celebration for us, showing the, the great things that are going on in our schools and the hard work that our teachers, um, administrators are doing with our students to show success as compared to the students that are around us. And so that's super exciting. And this one will show you, um, the breakdown by the assessments that they take. So if you look here, um, we have on the right side, our elementary versions where it has, um, overall proficiency is the first line. But it's broken down into our proficiency levels for reading, 3, 8, math 3, 8. And then in science, they only do the assessment in fifth grade and eighth grade. So you'll see the, the overall proficiency levels there, um, as compared to the state. And then on the left side, you'll see, um, the secondary with the overall composite for nine through 12. Math one, math three, biology and English two. Those are the EOC courses in the high school. Um, in the parentheses, the state uses a baseline of 2021 to look at the long-term goals. And so you can see that, that majority of our courses have shown growth and some of them significant growth since 2021. And so that's super exciting too. So not only are they making progress from one year to the next, but they're making multiple year growth. So, um, seeing great things going on. And we are higher than the state in all the areas except for one and only two percentage points behind that. But we definitely have plans and are working to push that forward. Exciting things that our school. And the other metric that you'll look at is the academic growth. And this basically is looking at the growth that the students have made, um, over one year. So what we're looking at this growth is comparison from 22, 23 to 23, 24. School years, you know, you get, but, um, you're looking at, at those growths. And they report them out as exceeding growth, meeting growth or not meeting growth. And you heard when they were doing the exceeding growth schools, um, this is where that comes from. So if you look at the chart here, um, what we're looking at, uh, there is a growth index metric that the state uses, um, through a formula. But it looks at again, that growth from, um, from one year to the, the previous year. If it is, um, uh, as Dr. Dara Revis mentioned earlier, if it is below a negative two, two, then they fall in the category of did not meet growth. If it is, um, a positive two or above, they fall into the exceeded growth category. And then in between is, um, your schools that met growth. And you can see that, um, we have, again, as we celebrated earlier, three schools that exceeded growth, which is extremely positive.
Sure.
Um, and then we have five schools that met growth, which is exciting because that means they can, they can maintain. And then they're actually even growing in those categories. And then we have three schools that did not meet growth. Um, two of those, um, this is, this is either their first year or their first year in, in a few years that they did not meet growth. But meeting with both of those, they have huge plans and I think that they're, they'll get over that, that hump for next year. Um, and then we have East who, um, has not met for a few years, but has grown six points on the growth index in just two years. So they are absolutely moving in the right direction. And it's exciting to see that growth. And I think that we're gonna eventually get there with them too, as they continue to push and move forward. And, and so based on those, you'll see school performance grades. And they give grades as the overall, um, for the school. And then they break that down into, um, subgroups. And you can see the subgroups listed there. Subgroups only get grades if they have a minimum of, um, of 30 students in that subgroup, um, within one or more of the indicators that they use to assign the grade. And the, um, performance grades are based on, um, the achievement score, which is 80% of that grade. And then the growth score, which is 20% of that grade. On this slide, you can just see an example. This is not ours at the bottom, it's just an example, um, that the state has that shows you how they do that, that breakout to come up with the actual grade. And you can see the grading scale there. And here, what you're looking at is our grade breakdown over the last couple of years. Um, the last column is, is the one for this year. Um, the little pie, pie graphs, pie charts that you see there, um, on the left, that is, I know it's small and hard to see. That is, um, the state and the breakdown of grades across the state pro, for each, um, grade span. So the one on the left is elementary. And if you look there, the majority of the schools fall into, um, fall into that C and D category in, um, in elementary and middle school. Most of them fall again in that C and D category. And in high school, it's more that B and C category. So if you look at ours, we're right there in the state, um, in terms of where our letter grades are falling. Um, and if you look at, um, even though we do have some D schools, they are very, very close to being up to the next level. So they are working very hard and, and have great plans to move forward. So some are just one point away, two point or three points away. So I feel like that we are definitely on the right track of moving into that next category as we move into next school year. And then, um, the last part we're gonna look at today is the designation. So there's federal designations and state, state designations based on those letter grades. I'm not gonna read through the next couple of charts there just for your information, but just so you can see the different categories. And the lowest category on the federal identification is, um, the targeted support and improvement, the TSI schools. Um, and then, um, the next level is CSI. And those are your comprehensive support and improvement. That's usually your bottom 5% schools. So in, um, Alexander County, uh, we have, um, four schools, um, that fall in the TSI category. So we still are in that lowest, um, that lowest identification level. So schools are working, um, to, to move out of that category. Most of the, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The, um, the identification falls in the subgroups of students with disabilities. What that means is that they have, um, a grade F in that, that category for, um, three years in a row. Students with disabilities is a very difficult group to show growth with, but we are continuing to see growth. And I'm working with the EC department, the schools are partnering together and coming up with lots of plans. And we've seen growth in a lot of these schools moving forward. It just hasn't got quite over the mark yet, but definitely moving in the right direction with those plans. I've heard several of them already. And then the state designation looks at low performing schools. And, and we have four schools that fall in the low performing school category. And these are schools that either have a D or an F, um, and, uh, have a growth status of met or not met. Um, so if you're looking at that, we have four of those, three of which are continually, meaning they've had at least two of the last three years that they've fallen into that category. But if you go back and remember those, um, growth index, we have very, in, in the letter grades, you'll see we have some that are very, very close to being in that next level. So even though we see the reflection of D here, I feel like we have potential of really moving a lot of those schools up, just those couple of points that they need to get to that next level. The last couple of slides are just a reflection of where we are in our graduation, um, rates. And this is, uh, the one for this year is based on grade rates that came in in 2021. We stay sort of level right there in the mid eighties. Um, and so, um, talking with, with Mr. Lael, they are really digging in, trying to meet with those kids, trying to pull those kids out and push them through and get them to the end. So they're already working on plans to, to kind of get that rate moving and move it, um, get the students all the way through the graduation. And the last slide here is just a reflection of our ACT and work keys indicator. Um, and we are definitely above the state in our students that are moving through those assessments. And so what are we doing with all of this data information? Um, right now, um, school out, one of the things that impresses me the most is how reflective these schools are and meeting with, with the principals and talking with them and learning about their schools. They already know. They've already met with their, their teams. They looked at the end of the school year when they've got some of the preliminary information in. They've already made plans, they've already made some changes, they've already looked at what they need to do and set up professional development and et cetera. So they are very self-reflective and they are very action-oriented. And so, um, taking those plans, looking at their needs assessments, looking at their school improvement plans, looking at what's working, what's not working. And really evaluating what do we need to target? What do we need to repeat and continue? What do we need to target? And so some of the things we'll do is, um, create plans with our low performing and TSI schools that really dig into that specific area that will help move their, in their metrics. Um, and partner with a lot of the resources that state provides and that we have around us to support those, those plans. Um, one of the things that we would like to do is start, um, letting teachers, you know, they, they do a lot of collaboration together. But getting them to see each other outside of their own school. There's great, great things that have them within their school, but also giving them opportunities to see other places as well. And bring that back in where they are so that, that we can share together across district. But then another one is, um, really looking at that tier one core instruction, making sure that we're digging into our standards and really teaching those with fidelity and depth. And then individually meeting our students' needs through NTSS, um, based on what they specifically need us in. So that is a overall comprehensive view. And as we go through the school year, there'll be more opportunities to dig into that. Do you have any specific questions for today?
Is there any financial, uh, reimbursement for these loads, test scores to assist these schools from federal state?
Not in terms of, of the state that we're in now with the, the low performing. And they don't provide any financial assistance at this point. If you were to go further, there's some things that may come in line with that, but right now.
Okay.
Any other questions? Dr. Bowles, one question.
Yes, sir.
When you provided the, the granularity in the middle schools between math, science, reading and our year-over-year improvements in math and science, but a 6% erosion in reading. Is that an early warning indicator of where our curricula needs to be shored up? Or some of these action plans need to be focused to get our scores overall?
Yeah, that's definitely an area that they have been targeting over the last couple of years. Um, some of the changes from the state, changes in standards, um, and the way that they're assessed. So there's several changes, I think, that attribute to what that may look like more than a negative than what we really see in our schools. But, um, our schools are, are doing a lot with that front and foundational skills right now with, um, some of our curriculum, some of the things that are coming out of the state. That I think we're going to begin to see come alive in our, our upper grades and their testing as students are moving forward with all of that training. But yes, that's a, that's an area we'll continue to look at to make sure we're unpacking the standards and digging in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of our teachers and all of our staff on an everyday basis. You know, when you see the comparisons against the state, I think it drives home that, you know, we've got a lot of very passionate people about what they're doing. It's not, it's not just a job. And, and I think when you compare against the state, we, we all see areas that we can work on, you know? And that's, that's everyday life and everything. But, uh, kudos to our staff for what they do every day.
Yep, absolutely, it's very evident.
Very well said.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Great update. So next, Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, the financial report.
I think we're getting much, much closer to a budget. Uh, we plan to bring a budget to you, uh, next month. You know, it's, it's hard to, to designate time to work on the budget when you've got all of the other stuff that goes on, um, back in the finance department. Um, to give you an idea, we have, uh, probably between six and seven, eight thousand codes in our financial system. And when we do the budget, we probably hit between four and 5,000 of those codes. So it is, um, it, 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 it is a process and, and we try to get, uh, maybe half a day's work every day. But the other day after we had worked on the budget, finished working on the budget, Andrea said, well, how do you feel about it? How do you feel about it? And, um, you know, uh, uh, accounting people don't really feel.
Not really.
But, um.
Working on that.
But I have heard people say, when they have a heart attack, it's like an elephant sitting on your chest. And that's the way I felt last year when we used so much fund balance when we did the budget. And as I went through the year and we were using that money, it wasn't that it was just in the budget, we were using that money. And it was like this elephant sitting on my chest. But, um, as of the preliminary, uh, figures from the audit, um, auditors. We had budgeted a, a 950,000, $59 decrease in fund balance in the budget. Which turned out, um, they're saying an 809,404 dollar decrease. We used that much money, uh, from our fund balance last year. But with all the hard work that we did, all the riffs and the hard work and, and looking at all the different areas in our budget. I think we're going to be able to maintain a million dollars this year. And, uh, I mean, in this year's budget. And I, I think that's just phenomenal. I, I, I just feel that's so important. That, that is, is the fact that we have saved $800,000. And, and, um, I, I appreciate that. It took all of us working very hard. And, you know, there's still a lot of work to do. If we have lost another hundred students, uh, then, then that's going to show up. We're going to need to continue to do that. I think also another, um, encouraging thing is that I expected there to be, um, a whole lot of. I think also another encouraging thing is that I expected there to be a whole lot of unemployment claims. So far, I have not seen that. We have probably had five and most of those have found positions and actually didn't draw unemployment but before, you know, they withdrew their claims. So I feel very good about, very good about that. So I hope I have brought you, finally brought you some good news. Anything, any questions?
Any questions?
Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well. Next is Dr. Alicia Clor, our human resources update.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and Dr. Griffin. In your package, you had information for the recommendations for personnel. Upon reviewing that, do I have any motion to approve those recommendations?
I make a motion.
Do we have a motion being made by Mr. Dagenhart?
Second.
And second by Mr. Reese. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The HR agenda is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Griffin?
Great, thank you, Chair Agüez, members of the board. First thing I'd like to say is that we've had an incredible start to the 24, 25 school year. That's taken a lot of hard work and preparation from those at the central services office here, from our school board. A lot of planning has been put in place and I think it's paid off for our schools. We heard from transportation earlier, although things are never perfect those first couple of days, we did get those buses running and we got those students to and from their residences to school. And I applaud the efforts of each of our departments to make that happen. We always, when opening a school year, there are things that don't go perfect. We understand that, but we learn day by day and we get better each day to a point that hopefully we certainly do what we need to for our students. So I applaud the administrators and our directors and our teachers for being very prepared and making this start, an incredible start. As mentioned by Dr. Bowles, we are proud of the efforts of all of our employees and students with regards to the release of our accountability measures. Although we have many achievements to celebrate, any areas of improvement will be supported and recognized. You know, those achievement scores are one day and operations of our entire school year and reflected thereof. I do want to commend all of our teachers and administrators and those involved with pulling off an entire school year. There's a lot of hard work and dedication, a lot of emotions go into doing all that you can for those students. And the students, of course, do the best they can on those standardized tests. And we celebrate those successes and anywhere that we see their shortcomings, we'll certainly work with those teachers and school leaders and our students to improve upon that. We'd also like to say that we'd like to recognize our finance and HR departments as we want to bring some good news to our employees. We've gotten together with Mark III, our supplemental benefit supplier, and we're looking to provide all full-time employees with a $2,500 life insurance policy and an employee's assistance program to each employee and their affected families. This will be at no cost to each of our employee. We've worked with them and trying to work with a cost that was pleasant to us. That's a benefit that we hope we never have to use for anyone, but it's free to our employees and it's something that could make a difference in a family if they deal with a tragedy. So it's one way we just want to say thanks and offer a benefit to our employees. So I'd like to recognize that at this point. We're also looking to work through our vision plan and updating that and a plan that we believe will provide more assistance to our employees and less expensive to our employees for more pleasing plan there. So we're working with that provider to put some dollars back in the pockets of our employees that yet give them a better benefit. So during our open enrollment, that'll be in December, hopefully we'll have those out for each of our people and bring them good news there. We're currently monitoring our district ADM. As of last Friday, we were down about 100 students. And that's crucial as we move forward and those fluctuations. Sharon just spoke to us about our budget. That's something that we certainly need to be cognizant of and make sure that we're aware of those. And I'm going to talk about that just a little bit more in just a second. Some dates for upcoming events, September 4th through the 13th, beginning of year already, assessments will take place. October 1st will be our next board work session. And then October 8th will be our next board of education meeting. And then there are a lot of activities that are going on in and out of all of our school As I alluded to, I want to talk just a little bit about our average daily membership and what that means for us. I've done a little bit of charting here on where we were. Five years ago, in 2019, 2020 school year, we had, at this time, we had 4,715 students. In pulling our data, at the end of day 10 for this school year, we currently have 4,207 students, which is a difference of 508 students in those five years. So you see that our average daily membership, our enrollment is steadily declining. And that's something that we have to look at.
Yes.
And something that we have to study and something that we have to do all we can to try to get it going in a positive direction. As a per pupil expenditure coming from our state, per pupil expenditure account, when you put in those 508 students, that comes over $4 million that's not in our budget for those students. So that's big money.
It is.
That makes a difference for who we can employ and how we can serve our people to serve our students. With that being said, I would like to recognize or ask the board to recognize a proclamation of support for residential housing growth within our county. I bring this to the board's attention in the fact that I know that there are those within our communities that are concerned and have thoughts about this. We recognize those thoughts. We certainly support one's beliefs and where they are within their livelihood and their communities. But from a school standpoint of view, we need growth.
Sure.
We can use growth. Our buildings are not full and we can certainly and would love to serve more students each and every day in Alexander County. So I respectfully request at this point to read a proclamation that I have here that would just show that we support growth within our county, not particular neighborhoods, but within our entire county because we, as a school system, can certainly utilize more student enrollment. And proclamation reads as follows. It says, whereas Alexander County has a limited tax base with taxable property per capita, consistently ranking near the lowest of all counties in the state, and whereas Alexander County has also seen a steady and significant decrease in the school age population, which directly affects the level of state funding that is based on an average daily membership or total enrollment, and whereas Alexander County schools are not at capacity and can support an influx of school-aged children at its schools each in each district, and whereas residential growth across the entire county will help attract families with school-aged children to Alexander County, thus increasing the average daily membership and allowing for an increase in revenue to Alexander County schools from state appropriations, and whereas said residential growth will also increase the taxable property of Alexander County and allow for the possibility of increased funding from local appropriations for operating and capital expenditures, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Alexander County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Education does hereby support the controlled growth of residential communities in Alexander County that will aid in the increasing the taxable property and school age population of Alexander County adopted this day, the 10th day of September 2024. At this point, I would like to respectfully make the motion that we adopt this proclamation to support residential housing growth in Alexander County due to the impact that it would simply have on us as a school system.
Fellow board members, do we have any questions or concerns or comments before moving forward with a motion? Therefore, do we have a motion to proceed and to give me the authority to sign this proclamation?
I make a motion.
I second.
So we have a first from Mr. Dagenhart and a second from Mr. Reese. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The board unanimously approves to proceed and sign this proclamation. Thank you very much for your preparation and clearly articulating the need for additional kids in our school system. And this is a godsend and in reality, if this does materialize.
For our school system, yes.
Sure. And this just shows the relationship that Dr. Griffin has made with our county commissioners.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Just love it and appreciate, appreciate all that our county commissioners are doing to increase our ADM.
Thank you. That's all I have, Jim.
That's all we have then on the superintendent's. So unfinished business then, we proceed with Ms. Sharon Mahaffey to review our board of education policy revision, second reading.
We have two policies up for second reading tonight. Insurance, 8340, and school finance officer, 8510. I have, these have stood for a month. I've received no comment and would ask for approval on second reading.
I make a motion to approve the two policies, 8340 and 8510 on second reading.
Second by Mr. Bowman? Got that? I'm sorry, I couldn't catch.
It's good. Yeah, it's Mr. Bowman.
Very well. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Both policies are unanimously approved. Very well. So now we have new business. So proposed board of education policies, Ms. Mahaffey.
We have six policies for first reading tonight. Technology in the education program, 3220. Technology responsible use, 3225. Student promotion accountability, 3420. Graduation requirements, 3460. Extracurricular activity and student organizations, 3620. And I'd like to thank Dr. Bowles. She has worked on these policies to bring, to update them for us. And we will bring those policies back next month. Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings. I would like to do a little closer examination of that policy. We will bring this back next month for review again, but I'd like to review the parts of this policy that we're going to change. And that, and the wording will be there. Speakers wishing to address the board must sign up by 4:30 PM on the last business day prior to the scheduled board meeting. Sign-up sheets will be available at the central services office located at 700 Liledown Road, Taylorsville, or by calling central services at our phone number and registering via phone with the receptionist. And our receptionist is Laura Ritchie. And then a second addition, for speakers with limitations that would prevent in-person attendance, written public comment is due to the board clerk by noon on the scheduled board meeting day.
Now, Ms. Mahaffey, is this policy change and update in any way consistent with other government entities or public boards that we have in our county?
Yes, the county requires speakers to sign up prior to the board meeting.
Okay, very well. So this way we would be consistent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mahaffey, so the, if you couldn't come in person, you still have to sign up by that time?
Yes.
But then you can submit your written by noon, your written public comment. Is that the way I'm, is that correct, what I'm reading?
Okay. If you have some kind of, let me make sure I understand your question.
Okay, because I was confusing too.
Okay, if you have, if you, well, first of all, let me do it, let me, if you simply can't come by to sign up to speak at the board meeting, then you can call.
Correct.
And Laura will take your information.
Okay.
If you want to speak.
Okay.
If you have a physical limitation where you cannot actually physically come to the meeting, then you may submit your written comments to Michelle prior to the board meeting, by noon on the day of the board meeting.
But that same person with the limitation still has to sign up on the last business day prior by 4:30?
That's correct. And they have until, then they have until 12 to get that information in.
Okay.
That's correct.
And maybe we need to make that a little clearer here. And I'll reword that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Good question.
Any other questions from the board? Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our open session portion of board. Do we have a motion to adjourn open session and enter into closed session?
Somebody second.
So we have Mr. Bowman. Mr. McLean, you were the second. So Mr. Bowman and Mr. McLean. All in favor of adjourning open session and entering into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.